Agenda item 2.1, Student Success: Defining Skill Builders. We have a presentation?
Yes. As part of our ongoing agenda items about student success, today we're going to be talking about defining skill builders. So for that presentation, I'll let Dr. Long introduce our presenters today.
Well, unfortunately, I'm going to introduce one presenter today because one of our presenters is sick. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you our new Dean of Career Technical Education, Molly Smith, who would have been joined by our Department Chair of Computer and Office Studies, Jean Carbonaro. So Molly is on her own tonight, so I'll let Molly introduce you to the skills builders part of the student success scorecard and then talk a little bit about some of our certificate programs.
Yes. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. So I want to introduce you to the skills builders from my perspective. You may already know about it. It's in the scorecard now. So what I want to tell you, the story goes, is that CTE professionals, faculty and deans and directors have been talking about skills builders even though they weren't named that for years. And really anecdotally, you would look at Perkins data or you would look at completion data and you would, faculty would know that students had come to them and they had got what they needed and they went out into the workforce and they got, you know, a higher wage, they got whatever they need, but they were actually looked as failures on behalf of the community college. So that's what I want to talk about tonight. Then in about 2013, a faculty member from the University of Michigan decided to pull a very large database from California Community College and look at course-taking behavior on behalf of students. And what they were able to tie it to was wage gain. So that's the external anchor that gives this information some validity. So students came, got something, six or less units, and then they left and they had a wage gain. So that's what's the important part about this. That coined the phrase "skills builders." And so now they are called "skills builders," they're six units or less, and they're actually on our scorecard. The document that they produced is called "The Missing Piece," and it was produced by Peter Barr of the University of Michigan and Kathy Booth, who's from the RP group, who many of you may know. And the definition is six units or less, 70 percent completion rate, and a wage gain. So that's how they're actually, because a lot of students come and leave, but they don't have a wage gain. So that's what this presentation is about. And the information that we're going to present tonight was created by Institutional Effectiveness. And I want to say that this is, that it's in the nascent stages of examining here at Long Beach City College, and that's what we're going to talk about. And we'll be able to drill down and mine this data more. And I have some recommendations at the end on how I think it would be valuable to Long Beach City College. And so anyway, we'll continue now with this presentation. And unfortunately, Jean has, is ill and has been ill for some time, so I did speak to him this morning. He was going to try to come, but he couldn't make it. But I can share what he gave to me. So what is a skills builder? We talked about that, six or fewer units. And it is a, the students have a career-related goal. A lot of them are in CTE, as you will see. And also, this, they build skills to access social institutional resources. A lot of the students who are skills builders here at Long Beach City College are not CTE, they're in ESL. So they're acquiring language skills that will give them the foundation to go out and get more education, be able to negotiate on their own behalf at the DMV or wherever life takes you. So that's an example of that. It expands the definition of completion. So we've decided that completion in the community colleges is a certificate that we decided the length of, or an AA degree, or certainly they can go on to get a bachelor's degree. But in fact, a lot of students come to us and they get a few units and they go out and they're successful. So this is an opportunity to better understand what the people in our community need and capture those students' success. They also have a significant wage earn, and they don't obtain a cert, our traditional certificate, AA degree, or a transfer within six years. So this is the cohort that we've started to examine here at Long Beach City College, '07, '08 through '11. And as you can see, this is the numbers that they drew, but what they found over four years is that we have about one in five students is qualified as a skills builder. So they meet the requirements of the six units, 70 percent completion, and wage gain. They are predominantly male, they are predominantly white as compared to our general population, and about, they're 25 years and older, so about 54 percent of them. These are, so it's, 43 percent of them are skills builders as compared to 25 percent of the population in CTE course-taking behavior. The, these are the areas in which most of them are, actually, they're mostly in ESL math and administration of justice, but Terry and I felt it was important to put up there what the top three were in the career technical education. And I did speak with Mike Biggs today about this and ask him what he thought, why administration of justice. There are a lot of advanced officer training, but we don't think it's that. We think it might have something to do with homeland security, but we don't know because we haven't gone down into this to find out why it is that it's so high in administration of justice. Then the general population, course-taking behavior is primarily math, English, and history. Those are the larger numbers. So what I provided in handout is because you couldn't actually see this on the screen, but when you look at the skills builder as defined by the Chancellor's Office, as goes into the scorecard, is a snapshot, and this happens to be for '12, '13. So it's a little bit different than what we're looking at and as defined by the research. But these are the primary areas, as you can see, of the skills builders and the associated wage gain. So you can see administration of justice is the primary one, information, technology, business, and commerce, and then it goes down from there. And the next slide show, this is the median wage earn, is they are primarily, interestingly, remember, they were primarily white, but the wage gains are more significant for the populations that you see, Filipino, Hispanic, Asian, and African American. So they're providing, I would suppose that it's providing a significant, possibly it is ESL, but it's providing something in their lives that is significant for them to give them a boost in their life that results in a wage gain. So this is what I think is important to think about, so what? You know, we have this information, so what do we do now? In career technical education, I've always thought that when we talk about skills builders, one of the primary things we need to look at first is program alignment. So we've decided that we have a certificate or an AA degree of a certain length, right? But if you look at completions, you may not be completing a lot. So we're building programs possibly that people don't really need. They can come and take part of it and go away and get what they need. So we need to look at that because we are in the completion agenda, but, for the institution, but we also want to give individuals what they need and then go on, and then we can build those in stackable certificates or whatever. So it has to do with program alignment, and that's something that we're looking at in career technical education. Also fee-based courses. Some of the things that they come and get may be appropriate to be offered in the fee base. They don't, you don't need to have a credit program. They can come and pay a fee and get what they need. Also, the low-unit stackable certificate. So if they need six units, excuse me, we'll package six units and they take the next three that they need and on up to where the end is, whether it's, you know, an AA degree or transfer. The other thing is, if in fact we want to try to engage these individuals further, we would want to look at our marketing strategies built around the course-taking behavior of these students. So let's package for what they need, and then let's also reach out to them. Certainly, the ESL population would be very ripe to engage and see if we can engage them further to get them what they need. So in the area of career technical education, one of the departments that has done the most work around this, and some of the programs you'll see will be over six units, but you'll get the idea, one of them isn't. And that is in the COS department, Computer and Office Systems. So this is the Microsoft Office Certificate. You can see it has two courses and an industry certification, which is exactly what the students need. There were 11 awards in '14, '15. The next one is another one, Computer Network Technician. That one is six units. And there were 31 awards in '14, '15. And the next one is the Computer Hardware Technician. That is again eight units, but then there were 22 awards. So the COS department is very aware of their population. They package their courses to get students what they need. And the easy thing to see for Computer Office Systems is they have an external industry certification, and that's what's valuable. So that's another thing to think about is not only what is it the students need, but also what is it that's valuable in the marketplace? Do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Archuleta.
Are these AM or PM, evening students? Do we know when they take the majority of these courses?
Which ones specifically? All the skills builders are these in particular?
Yeah, the skill builders.
I couldn't answer that. I could, you know, I could find that out. But there are some. I will say that in career technical education, we need to and are going to expand our evening offerings because there are some programs that would grow significantly if we would offer them the evening. And we're going to be making, exploring those and making those changes to offer more evening classes.
Yeah, absolutely. And the reason I ask that is that I would imagine that many individuals who are working during the day could really take advantage if these courses were offered in the evening or on the weekend. And so, do we have that, the courses available in the evening and on weekends?
Not now. There's, there are some, but not a lot. And that's one area that we've already discussed, and we're going to expand into the evenings. And also, we think that Fridays and Saturdays. You know, there are some programs that you could schedule out across Saturdays and people could get what they need at times that would work for them. So that's something we're going to look at. Like, we're going to start looking at that this summer. We already have a lot of the data on it.
If I may answer your question, Trustee Archuleta. With respect to COS, this department does an incredible job scheduling and scheduling to meet student needs. That's why they have the certificate completions. So we are not doing a great job across the board with our evening Friday weekends. But I would say that this department is a leader, and I would expect that every single one of those courses you see up there is offered in the day and at night. So that's one of the things, if Jean was here, I would commend him for really watching enrollments and really being sure that we're offering the courses when the students need them. And he does a really good job. And as Dean Smith said, we are making those plans to do that across the curriculum, to offer more in the evenings and on weekends so that we can increase our enrollments, but more importantly, really serve our students.
Yes, absolutely. Well, I'm glad that we are doing this. I mean, we've long known that many of our students that come and take, you know, a course over a semester, then drop out and then come back maybe a semester later, or that they're doing that for, you know, skill-building purposes. And this is a good way for us to document the success of these students because this is also a different type of success. But nonetheless, it is, we are meeting the need of the students. So wonderful job. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you.
Trustee Baxter.
I just had a couple of comments. First of all, I want to praise Jean Carbonaro because he does an outstanding job with his department. But three things that he's done that people may not know is, first of all, he applied for a foundation grant to pay for these tests because oftentimes the tests are $25, $50, and the students don't have them. So a fund was established to pay for the tests. Second thing he did was when high school students were taking these classes, paying their, for their textbooks because they're not used to paying for their textbooks. And so we made that arrangement. And then the third thing is having a department scholarship established through payroll deductions of literally every single member of the department hourly and full-time to offer scholarships for students. So to me, you know, he's my poster child for what departments can do. And they raised this year, just through payroll deductions, $2,000, and so are going to award $2,000 worth of scholarships. Congratulations to Jean.
Yeah, Jean's department is a leader in many different areas, so, yeah.
Right. Dean Striffick. Any other questions from anyone? Well, thank you very much for a very worthwhile presentation. It's something that we haven't really dealt with before, and it's good to know that we're moving in this direction.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.2, this is, I'm going to turn this over to President Oakley.
Yes. Over the past probably year and a half, I personally, and I know at least one or two board members, have gotten requests to consider bestowing an honorary degree on someone who has served the greater Long Beach area for a long time through his work with the Press Telegram, and that's Mr. Tim Grobady. He's also been inducted recently into the Long Beach City College Hall of Fame. So to carry that honor forward, we are presenting for the board's consideration that we do bestow an honorary associate's degree to Mr. Grobady at the upcoming commencement ceremony in honor of his work and is, in honor of his dedication to the greater Long Beach area.
Great. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we award Long Beach Press Telegram columnist Tim Grobady with an, Grobady with an honorary AA degree at our upcoming commencement on June 9th. Roll call vote, please.
I, can we have discussion?
Sure.
Okay. That's the reason I seconded. I'd like to know if there's a board policy regarding honorary degrees.
Currently, there is not a board policy, but we can certainly think about putting something together.
President Otto, I would like to recommend that this be researched and placed as a board policy.
Okay. Okay, that's easy to do and get a report back to the board. Okay. Roll call vote.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Aye. Agenda item 2.3, Approval of the 2017 Calendar of Board Meetings. They are listed in the agenda. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Aye. Agenda item 3.1 through 3.12.
312.
11, pardon?
312, 3.12.
Okay, thank you. This is the consent calendar. The, any item can be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately if a member of the Board of Trustees so requests. Is there anyone that wants to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Nope.
Okay. If not, is there any discussion about any item on the consent calendar? Roll call vote, please.
We have a need a motion.
Need to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought we had.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Archuleta, seconded by Trustee Baxter.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Aye. Moving on to 4.1, Under Academic Affairs, the Child Care Fair Increases 2016-17 and 2017-18. This is an action item. Is there a report on this, or are we?
Well, be happy to turn any questions over to Dr. Long, but basically, this is an item that comes before the board every so often as the Child Care Center reviews its fees, its costs, and does a survey of the surrounding area to determine what the most appropriate fee is. But certainly, Dr. Long is here as well as members from the Child Development Center who could answer any of the board's questions.
Does anyone have any questions at this point?
No, I'd just like to make a comment that I think this is one of our outstanding programs, and I want to salute the child development area.
Great. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Archuleta, seconded by Trustee Baxter. Any further questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Irma Archuleta?
Aye.
Virginia Baxter?
Aye.
And Doug Otto?
Aye. Moving on to 5.1, Under the Academic Senate. This is about Open Education Resources Resolution. That's OER, as we, it's known out there in the world, support efforts to increase access to high-quality, open education resources. This is an informational item.
Well, yes, it's an informational item, and I want to thank the Academic Senate for having this discussed at the Senate and for passing this resolution. I'd like to ask our Senate President Karen Kane to give any details she'd like to give about the resolution.
Thank you, President Oakley. As noted, the Senate passed this resolution on May 6th at their May 6 meeting, and this is just the first step in getting OER talked about at this college in a serious manner. This went to the College Planning Committee, CPC, last week. CPC recommends that we form a task force, and we will be working on that this summer, forming the mission charge and kind of membership of the task force so that we can get to work on this in the fall.
And I would just make the comment that at the statewide level, this is moving forward as well, the State Academic Senate passed a resolution at their plenary session several weeks ago, and it has been identified as an issue to be addressed this year by the entire Community College League of California, both the CEO Board and the trustee board, because we think it's at a point where we can really make some progress on this. For example, just as an inspirational note, I know that West Hills College has in process resolutions and board policies to make all of their basic courses OER within five years. And so I mentioned that to somebody here, and they said, impossible. And maybe it is, but I'm glad that everybody's paying attention to this because, let's face it, the reason that people have trouble completing their coursework sometimes has nothing to do with the fees. It has to do with the class of textbooks. It has to do with where they're going to get money if their cars break down or they have childcare issues. And so this is a step in not only completion, but student success as well.
And I'd also like to add that not only did the Senate pass this resolution, but since that happened, I've had overwhelming positive response from faculty and classified staff who would like to somehow be a part of this to make this happen faster at Long Beach City College.
Yeah. And so I want to talk about a little about OERs because I got really excited about this part of the agenda. So OER is, I brought this actually back to ASP earlier this year with Assembly Bill, and it's something that the state's actually looking at as well, not so much that different constituent groups, but students as well are paying attention. And it's a real big hindrance for students. One of the biggest concerns that I hear is textbooks. It's like, why am I paying so much for this textbook? Why am I paying $90 for this textbook, this 20-page workbook that my professor wrote? And it's just like, it's, the shift away from these unaffordable college textbooks and moving towards these open educational resources are really going to benefit students not only now, but in the long run as well because students are going to be here for a while. It's a great step, and students are also paying attention. I would like you to invite students as well to be a part of this OER discussion, and hopefully we can move the steps forward. I know we missed, we might miss the timeline to submit our plans for that June 30th. So that's probably, that's way too early for that. Yeah, but I'm really excited for it. I was really excited for this one specifically, and I hope we can have discussions with some students involved in how we can help out with OERs.
Great. Yes, Trustee Archuleta.
Yes. Well, I'm really happy. I'm very pleased that the faculty and the Academic Senate has embraced this OER, and I'm also happy to hear that the students are also embracing this because I think that this is the way to perhaps put an end to this, you know, issue, which really has created a lot of hardship and has created a reverse situation here in the state where the cost of the textbooks outweighs the cost of tuition. So I think this is a great start, and thank you for taking that leadership, so.
Great. Terrific. Any other comments? Okay, then, that was an informational item. We are moving on to Agenda Item 6.1, which is the Personnel Commission Annual Budget for 2016-17. This is a concurrence action, which means that we need to concur with the budget. Is there someone to make a presentation or talk about this?
Yes. I'd like to turn this over to Vice President Delgado, just to explain the item, and if necessary, I think, is Mona here or are you?
Yes, we have Mona in the crowd, Dr. Hassan. In fact, Dr. Hassan's-
Oh, there she is. She's hiding behind Randy.
Would you like to come on up while we introduce this topic? What you have before you, and this comes before the board every year, as required by California Education Code, the Personnel Commission did develop their budget. They are required to have a public hearing. They had that on May 2nd. They then adopted the budget for 1617 at their regularly scheduled meeting on May 16th. So today, we have it here submitted for the board to concur with the budget. What you'll take note of as you open the budget is that there's really no difference or significant difference between last year's budget and this year's budget. There's only a minor $3,000 increase. That has to do with the increase in salaries, but also because our director has completed a full year of employment, so there was a higher cost to that salary. So we are asking for pretty much the same budget as last year. But if you have any questions, Dr. Hassan, our Director of Classified Human Resources is here to answer any of them.
Are there any questions, comments, board members? We've seen it for about a month now, and, probably not. So in that case, we will, I'll ask if there is unanimity in concurrence with this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I think we need a formal vote on that. Do we, we just need to concur? Great. Good. Thank you very much, Mona.
Mona, I'm going to ask you to stay there because actually Mona is also involved with the next item.
That is 7.1, the 2016 through 2019 Equal Employment Opportunity Plan and Multiple Method Allocation Model.
Yes. So let me just give you a short introduction. Mona will be presenting our 2016 through 2019 Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. As you noted, it is a three-year plan. It encompasses the district's approach to equal employment opportunity, unlawful discrimination, and legal compliance. In addition, this year for the first time, we have what is being called the Multiple Method Allocation Model. That is the model that the Chancellor's Office is using for EEO funding to districts. So Mona is going to give us a presentation on both the plan and the Multiple Method Allocation Model. So Mona, by the way, of course, is our Director of Classified Human Resources. At the same time, she's also the co-chair of the Staff Equity Committee, who's very much involved in the development of this plan. Thank you. Mona?
Well, first of all, good evening, President Otto, Board of Trustees, Senate President and VP, Student Representative, and the audience. Thank you for having me here tonight to present this very important plan. I'm here to present this on behalf of the Staff Equity Committee, who actually also acts as the EEO Advisory Committee. So with that being said, I wanted to introduce my co-chairs also, Dr. Paula Fisher, who represents faculty, and then Corinne Magdaleno, who's the co-chair that represents, who represents classified personnel. And I'm not sure, I don't think they're here tonight, but we have several additional members of the EEO Committee as well. And I'll just introduce them, even though they're not here tonight, so that you're familiar with the names. They put a lot of work into this. Their names are, in no particular order, Diane Bangs, Amy Fredericks, Joshua Williams, Ryan Schorstrop, Jerry Florence, Janay Hund, April Hebert, and Diana Torres. So over the last few months, Dr. Kim Myers, who's our interim Associate Vice President of Human Resources, has led the charge through the Staff Equity Committee to develop this plan, which is now in alignment with Title V requirements and the mandates that we have through the Chancellor's Office. The presentation will touch just on a few of the salient components of the EEO plan and the multiple method allocation model, presented to you both for adoption tonight. So real quickly, we will go through the salient points. There are 17 components which you have in front of you through the plan. We're going to touch on eight of those. And at the end of the day, the objective and purpose of the EEO plan is to serve as the driving document- the driving document that ensures that the college has adopted the policies aligned with Title V, and has developed best practices that protect against discrimination in recruitment, and not only in recruitment, but in employment also, and has a comprehensive complaint procedure included to address claims of unlawful discrimination, and provides ongoing EEO training for hiring committees and hiring authorities as well. It also employs strategies that result in, that result in diverse pool of applicants, which we've been very successful in attracting a diverse pool of applicants. And in addition to that, we have the charge of working to diversify our workforce and provide some professional development where needed on cultural competency within the workforce. So the foundation of the work is based on research conducted by the Chancellor's Office, indicating that student learning is enhanced when there's an environment of cultural competency and a workforce that represents the diversity of the community. So as I indicated earlier, this is driven by Title V. It's also driven by Education Code. And components of this plan also includes how we're going to notify the community about our EEO Plan and our policy, and annual notifications to other community-based organizations as well. Additionally, we have in place a process for gathering the data, so we have to gather the workforce diversity data, which is also a component of the plan. Each year in November, HR presents an annual report to the Board of Trustees with updated workforce demographics and a summary of all the initiatives that we have in place to address diversity, including training, professional development, internships, and other strategies to support the objective of our Equal Employment Opportunity Plan.